We convened this roundtable at 6:04 this afternoon. It is with the Committee on Aviation. It involves United Airlines as well as safety concerns and the Guam International Airport, if the representatives are present. The way we're going to conduct this roundtable first is we're going to bring up our members, the public, who have any kind of statements that they would like to make for the benefit of the listening audience, the public, as well as our United representatives who are here with us today. And so at this time, I'd like to invite up those who have signed up to provide oral testimony. Anyone else who is interested in providing testimony can sign up with the committee. But for now, I'll call you guys up with as many chairs as we're able to accommodate. Dr. Tom Shea, we'll go ahead and have him go first, seeing that he needs to be somewhere real quick. I have Francis Munoz, Mr. Lee Weber, Mr. Eloy Hara. We have written testimony from Carl and Clara Peterson. We have oral testimony also from Mr. Carl Pangolinen, Ms. Vicki Fish, Mr. Anthony Korn, and Mr. David John. If you can all please join us. And I do have a written testimony here that I wanted to read into the record about Dr. Shea's situation. I will go ahead and defer to you first, Dr. Shea, if you can go ahead and provide your testimony.
Thank you, Senator. Now, I just wrote a few notes so that I can go ahead and just briefly have my channel of thoughts here. And I'll keep it to the topic of safety. I want to thank all the senators, all the honorable senators that's here today, and I want to thank you, Senator St. Nicholas, for hosting the roundtable. And as I walk in today, I noticed that everybody back here are all employed by United, and I want to make sure that I announce that I don't have a conflict of interest being here today because I'm a customer and not an employee of United Airlines. And trust me that I trust United Airlines a lot because I flew them, you know, Continental United, for the last 20 years or so. But let me just state my name for the record is that my name is Dr. Thomas Shea, and my family and I are very loyal customers, frequent flyers for Continental Airlines since arriving on Guam since 1996 with the United States Navy. This airline has since merged and is now called United Airlines. And over many years, we have flown millions of miles with this particular airline, and now we transfer over to United Airlines. Now, on the subject of safety, that's respectfully, Senator, that I'll keep my comment to that. Now, if I could just sway a moment to give my personal comment, as loyal customer of United Airlines, I only wish that United Airlines were more open and more customer-friendly from the corporate level. The employees and staff of United Airlines, the majority of them are Continental employees, are very great. They're fantastic, have no qualms or anything. But from the corporate level, I think they need to approach the Guam market a little friendlier. For example, at the roundtable today, they will not engage any field questions with the public or their customers. I think if they want to engage, I think it's better to just talk to their customers and see what's concerned concerning them regarding safety and service. Now, be it in May that recently my wife and daughter were United Airlines Flight 200 from Guam to Honolulu, and that was the flight that was delayed for one hour and then delayed for another two hours, then three hours, and then five hours. And the reason was, I guess, was because of a window that was leaking or there was a crack in the seal. Now, I'm glad that the pilot on that plane was honest, and the pilot stated that the window seal was old and was brittle. Now, at that time, I asked my wife perhaps she could just get off the plane and fly another day until that is fixed properly. But United, after five hours, they announced apparently they were confident that the window was fixed, the seal was good, and they were ready to board everybody and ready to take off. So after seeing my wife and daughter off, I went back to my clinic to see my patients. And two and a half hours into the flight, I get a text message on my phone because, you know, United has a great program where you can actually subscribe, and they'll text you messages and update you on the flight. And the text message read, "United Airlines Flight 200 is canceled." Now, when I got that message, there's no explanations at all, just Flight 200 is canceled. And as you can imagine, the first thought that threw my mind was, oh, no, what's going on? What happened? So I called United Airlines, and the United Airlines agent really did not know what was going on either. They didn't even know the flight was, you know, canceled or what was going on with that particular flight. Luckily, 30 minutes later, they updated their, you know, their program, and the cancellation actually was clarified and said that the flight was returning back to Guam or returning to gate. Later, about 30 minutes later, as you can see, my anxiety was quite high, you know, in the middle of the day when I saw my family off and then all of a sudden get a message that it was canceled. But I think my suggestion for United is that they should probably, if something like that happens, to notify the passengers, the families, and to let them know that, hey, the canceled flight is due to a maintenance issue and is returning back to the gate and nothing to worry about. But I didn't get any calls from that. Now, knowingly, though, every time you take off, you know, I heard the United Airlines corporate this morning on the radio saying that they took off, but there was no compromise in passengers. But the reality is that every time you take off, you compromise the safety of the passengers. Taking off, landing, those are all risks that you take. And granted that we're just customers and we don't know what the details of the mechanical fixtures in the plane, but for us as customers, that is quite an experience, you know, a scary experience, especially for me, actually. So if that, one suggestion, and, you know, I'm not just here to complain or anything, I think I also offer a suggestion. Next time, if you decide to delay a flight because of maintenance issues, you know, please make absolutely certain that the issue is fixed permanently and not just seal it, get off thousands of miles or into the air, and then try to test the plane and see how it goes, you know? Perhaps take a, fly the plane up without any passengers on board and come back down and say, okay, let's go. By taking 300 passengers on board, going into the air, and then turning around and saying that, hey, the seal's leaking and it was making too much noise, to me, that's just unacceptable. You need to make sure that if you have an issue, you fix it, you fix it right the first Better yet, you know, my other suggestion to fixing that issue is looking at the age of the planes. It's not the staff experience or the pilots' experience that I'm referring to. I'm talking about the equipment that they're flying between Guam and Honolulu route. And if the equipment itself is old and you have to keep maintaining it, of course, you're going to run into these issues. But for us as customers here on Guam, there's no other alternative during their route between Honolulu and Guam. That's the only route that we have. If a flight is canceled because of safety issues, I'd rather it being canceled, but there's no alternative for us to fly to Honolulu unless you go through Japan. So really, for United Airlines, you can't just, you can't just keep maintaining the planes the way it is if a plane is continuing to age. You have to do something about it to ensure that you are the best airline flying that particular route. And that's the route from Honolulu to Guam, Guam to Honolulu. Because you're the only game in town. There's no other service for us between that route. So you've got to make sure that your planes are top-notch. There's no such thing as second best. You've got to have the best plane, the best equipments to fly that particular route because you're the only game in town. There's no other game that we can fly on or no other planes that we can do. I can't comment on the particular issues regarding Midway Island or what happened there because none of my family members on board. Now, I'm going to conclude this pretty soon. There's one other safety issue that I wanted to bring up. I don't think this talked about before, but there's one flight, Flight 201 from Honolulu to Guam. My family was coming back, and one of my medical colleagues, one of the specialists, was coming here, and they brought up the issue that there was no running water. No running water. I mean, I never heard of that. One and two hours into the flight, you know, it was announced that there was no running water. It was discovered by the passengers and not really by the crew. So that was a big issue. And what was substituted at that time, after one or two hours into the flight, it was soapless water or soapless kind of detergent or kind of, you know, waterless kind of cleaner or something like that. But, you know, in the healthcare field, we, if you have a sore hand or in a restroom in a containment like an airplane, a waterless soap is not going to cut it. You won't get off the bacteria off of your hands or anything like that. So, you know, those things are hazard too, and those are safety reasons. So those are two issues that are brought up. But my suggestion, like I said, if I bring a point up, I always suggest a solution. And a solution is probably for United Airlines to start carrying five-gallon jugs. Five-gallon jugs with a pump on top. We all through that during typhoon season, we have that. So if you're not going to have running water on the airplane, you make sure that you have five-gallon jugs in each of the restroom to make sure that there's a pump handle that you have running water. Because if not, the safety of health hazard is there with a containment airplane in a closed cabin. You have people with medevac, you have people who are sick on the airplane. You don't want them coming back home sick or going to a destination that's sick. So make sure that if you're not going to have running water, make sure not just waterless soaps, but carry those five-gallon tanks on board. But it is my sincere hope that, you know, senators, that United Airlines is a hometown airline, and I appreciate their being here, but I hope they can take a message back. It's not just about the employees that's working here, but it's about the customer base that you have here. It's thousands and thousands of customers that you take, and those are real-life, you know, customers that you take back and forth. And we certainly appreciate the pilots and employees here on Guam that's working very, very hard to make improvements since the merger. But again, I don't want them to be, next year, begin the survey again. I know the last two, three years, the survey has come out, that United Airlines is the number-one airline, but it's not the number-one airline for the best airline, but it's the number-one airline for the worst airline in the industry. So I want them to improve to a point, especially this route between Honolulu and Guam, to be the number-one airline, to be the best airline in the industry. And that's what we need here on Guam. And I hope that we can achieve that by working with the corporate office of United and the employees here and the pilots to make sure the equipment is proper so that we don't have to keep running to these maintenance issues. And with that, I don't have anything much to say, but I'll draft a letter to corporate office regarding the other services that United has provided. But I certainly want to thank the senators for the opportunity to be here, and thanks for all the employees that's sitting behind me. And I feel like we're a small minority compared to them because when I walked in, there was no seats available. So maybe next time, Senator, I will reserve some seats for the public, some seats for employees, so that the public has some seats rather than employees taking up entire seating. But anyway, I appreciate your time very much.
Thank you, Dr. Shea. And I'm unaware as to who is public and who is employee at this time, so I'm assuming everybody here is just a, here is a member of the public. Good luck on your procedure today, Dr. Shea. At this time, I'd like to take the opportunity, before we continue, to introduce my colleagues who've joined us this evening. To my immediate left is my vice chairman on the Committee of Aviation, Senator Tom Adams. To his immediate left is Senator Tony Adams. To his immediate left is Senator Brent McCready, and to his immediate left is Senator Chris Duñez. Also joining me to my immediate right is Senator Frank Uggan Jr. and Senator Dennis Rodriguez Jr. Thank you all to my colleagues for joining me this evening. I'm going to go ahead and go down the list of order of who signed up first. I think it's the fairest way for us to go about this. I have next Francis Munoz. Mr. Munoz.
Here it is. Thank you, Senator. As much as Dr. Shea, my name is Francis Munoz, very concerned citizen, father, grandfather. I came here to speak on behalf of hundreds, if not thousands, that fly United all year My concern is hopefully to eliminate some of the fears of flying United. Some of the questions that I wanted to know professionally is how up-to-date in technology is United? I can remember as far back as 40, 50 years ago when weight and balance, weight and balance on an airplane was conducted on charts, was done on charts, and we can go back to New York, Amsterdam, or whatever, wherever you want to go. I want to know exactly how technology has equipped United with diagnostics, weight and balance, maintenance specialists, RAM service operation, which is all very essential on each flight that the investigation is conducted and plus the computer that's hooked up to the airplane. So I want to know just-
Mr. Munoz, I'm sorry to interrupt you, sir, but we just got hit with a power fluctuation that's taken out our recording devices. So if you could just give us a good five minutes, and we'll get everything back online. Because this is all actually going into the public record. The Sergeant Arms will inform us as soon as everything's back up. We've got to question the technology of the Guam Legislature. Gone. So if we can just get everything together, and I'll signal the Sergeant Arms to go ahead and begin rolling again. Tom? Tom, are we back online? Okay, we're back online. Mr. Munoz, I apologize for the delay. To the members of the listening audience, we did have some technical difficulties, but Mr. Munoz, you left off with the technology of United, so if you can, please continue, sir.
All right. So with my full support for United Airlines, I hope they continue, and hopefully we can get some information on technology and how it applies to the aircrafts, aviation, you know, and specialty generators, weight and balance, you know, diagnostic tools that can monitor the airplane's operation, you know? And with that, maybe I can hopefully eliminate some of the fears that, you know, there's a lot of talk out there. A lot of people are talking about, hey, man, is it safe to fly? I've got my kids, my grands, and everybody flying, you know, I mean, here comes summer, and then you have a lot of kids leaving the island for advanced education, you know, universities in mainland. Not only that, but you have Southeast and everything, you know? So they're all very concerned, and I just hope I can get some kind of relief from the airlines' officials and give us some kind of relief and eliminate some of the fears of... But other than that, I, back in the '70s, I did, I can say, for the first four years at Kennedy International Airport, I graduated with a minor aviation, and of course, you have to start out with the RAM service operation, you know, and learn how to operate the generators and stuff. And big airports, we have traffic lights, you know, that control the incoming and outgoing aircrafts. So it was very hectic. It was 24/7 operation. So there was three, four crews that went on, you know, 24 hours, you know? I hope that United can give us some information, you know? And I'd be satisfied if somebody spoke and gave us the information so we can feel safer and about how technology is being applied. Because I've seen some airplanes that, you know, have not really been complying with a lot of federal guidelines, and that was one of my concerns. So with that, I thank you for the opportunity, and I wish United and, good God, look at this, man, this is United!
United?
Man, I wish I came here with fishing rights and I had this much people supporting. Thank you very much, senators, and I wish everybody luck, United. Good luck, and hopefully we can get some professional information that we can send out to the people so they can, we can eliminate some of the fear, you know? Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Munoz. I also have here, Mr., I'm sorry, any of my colleagues have any questions or comments from Mr. Munoz? No? Okay, I have Mr. Lee Weber. Sir?
Good evening, senators. Can I ask a question of you before I say anything? How many complaints did you receive?
For, regarding which one? This particular roundtable?
The safety issue, yeah.
We have actually a packet here of multiple emails. I prepared the packet for the United folks to go ahead and take with them to review. They do concern some safety issues, some non-safety issues, but altogether, maybe I can go ahead and count it off here. One, two, there's about actually four attached to this as a gun. Five, six, seven. About seven.
Seven.
Seven emails, yeah. Maybe about three phone calls.
Yeah. It's an election year, right?
It absolutely is.
Yeah, it's an election year. I'm just, I've flown United, I don't know, as long as I can recall, and have more than well over a million miles on them. I just, I'm aware of the regulations, fairly well aware of the regulations as it relates to safety and the requirements that the airlines have to follow. And I feel perfectly safe flying the airline. I mean, I don't, I don't, I don't know what the other people think, but I just think that...
That was for you.
There's a lot of votes in this room. But I just think that while it is an election year, and that I believe, my opinion, is that that has a lot to do with what we're doing here tonight. But that's just my opinion, and I've always never feared sharing it. But I think that the Guam community, at least from my perspective, I've flown United a long time, and I continue to fly United, and I'll fly United in the future. And they've got good people, like Doc Shea said, and they're a good airline. Can they improve? Yes. Can anybody improve? Yes. Can the legislature improve? Yes. You know, I mean, I just, that's all I have to say. I'm just, I'm just here to support them, and I think they, I think they do a good job. And they can, they can improve, but they do a good job. And I, and I feel comfortable flying their airline and with all the FAA regulations and things that they have to go through in order to fly, I don't have any hesitation about getting on the plane. Thank you for the opportunity.
Thank you, Mr. Weber. Next, we have Mr. Eloy Hara. Mr. Hara.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. My name is Eloy Hara. Most of the locals here know me, but for the sake of those that don't, of course, I am still an active member of the Consolidated Commission of Utilities. And I used to be at Guam Power, and during the seven years that Mr. Vinavanti and I ran Guam Power, we garnered the American Public Power Safety Award seven straight years. This is operating our power utility islandwide 24/7 between a million to 5 million man-hours. So I needed to say that to impress on the public and especially the United Airlines corporate. The employees of United Airlines is just like employees of government of Guam. They're excellent employees, outstanding employees. Sometimes they have lousy leadership. And now, I know, I almost didn't want to come here because I am a million-mile traveler. Give you an example, last year, I flew in February to Auckland, New Zealand. February, March, April, May, June, July, August, September, October. Every month, I fly in and out of Guam. That's how I garner my million miles. So I am, you know, fortunately, most of those million miles were under air mic. When I was stationed in Hawaii for eight years, I flew United exclusively between Hawaii and the mainland because my family lives in Oklahoma. So I have no problem with United Airlines. I still have no problem with United Airlines today. But Dr. Shea kind of really gave me the impetus of where to stress my comment. And by the way, the safety gentleman that was at K-57 this morning, is he here in this room?
He will be joining us after we convene the public.
Okay. I listened to him intensively. I didn't get his name because I got on K-57 a little late. He said all of the beautiful thing, the right thing, in terms of safety policy at the highest level. Excellent. But as Dr. Shea said, I don't care how good a safety program you have if you have lousy junk fleet of airplane. And let me correct, let me explain that. I was, like I said, a platinum flyer with Conen Air Mic. Beautiful fleet of aircraft. Everywhere I go, I'm flying in the state-of-the-art aircraft, and all of them have television on each backseat of the airplane. Everywhere I go, to Hong Kong, to Singapore, to Auckland, New Zealand, to Japan, to the Philippines. Lately, in my travel last year, not a single plane between here and Hawaii and the mainland has any of those comforts of life. And I think they said they're reducing my fee or something because I didn't get to watch any movie. And let me tell you why that movie is important to me. Because I'm a frequent flyer. If I'm going to fly to Washington, DC and get there early in the morning, then what I do is do all my sleep at night on the flight. But if I'm going to get to DC at 4:00, 5:00 in the afternoon, then I watch a movie all the way and force myself to stay awake so that when I get over there, then it's bedtime for me. So that's how I never, I never have jet lag. I get to where I'm going, I'm wide awake. I come back from where I've been, I'm wide awake, ready to hit the ground running. So Dr. Shea said it best again, okay? And my recommendation is rather, we wouldn't be having this problem if United Airlines kept the very airplane that Conen Air Mic was flying. But as soon as they switch, all of those airplanes disappeared, and we got this, what I call junk airplane. And you know what? That insults me a lot. Because that tells me that the corporate United Airlines doesn't think much of me, that you take the nicest airplane, state-of-the-art airplane, away from my flight here, and you give me junk airplane. And I'm using the word junk only in the sense that, you know, we had state-of-the-art, brand-new fleet under Conen Air Mic. Super service, super flight. And I, by the way, I found out where a lot of the Conen Air Mic, because I quit flying between here and Honolulu. And another thing is, when Conen Air Mic flies to Honolulu, we dock at Gate 25, 26, 27, which is right about the center of the terminal. So we get, we get off, and for the likes of me, I still don't understand why we do it. For the likes of me, we get off and we go through immigration, which we do up through here anyway, and then we back on the airplane, but not much walk. Now, United Airlines, and as over 76 years old, and, you know, I have gout problem, I have vertigo problem, and so now United Airlines parks at either Gate 7, 8, or 9, which is the farthest away from immigration. So we get on the Wiki Wiki bus, and we offload, go down immigration, get our suitcase and send it in, and then now I have to go all the way back out and walk all the way back to Gate 7, 8, or 9. And generally, I miss several flights because you only have 25 minutes to do all of that. So I do have a serious problem with the way United, you know, how you fix us out at the Honolulu Airport. So now you know why I'm really upset, and not at any of the Conen Air employees, it's at the corporate level. Because as Dr. Shea seems to think that, I mean, at least to also opine, and I do too, that the corporate level don't really think much of us here in Guam. That's why they take away all the nice fleet and give us the old airplane. And by the way, it's just a matter of time, and I hope that we don't wait till one of those aircraft before we decide that, hey, we do have, you know, old airplanes flying to Guam. And listen, the closest place that we fly to from here is the Philippines and Japan, which are over three hours long. The rest are all over, mostly seven hours to Hawaii, or from Hawaii, seven hours to Houston, seven and a half sometimes. So that is really my statement, and of course, it's on record. And my name is Eloy Hara, and I'm very easy to find. I'm on the media lot. I'm on the media lot. And I work for the Consolidated Commission of Utilities. And I'm accessible there, so if anybody would like to, you know, get ahold of me, I'm available. And thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you very much, Mr. Hara, for sharing your sentiments. Next on the list, we have Mr. Carl Pangolinan. Carl.
Good evening, Hafedeh. Thank you, Mr. Chair, Committee on Aviation, as well as other senators. Thank you for allowing me to speak tonight. I don't know if I am actually providing testimony, or I'm not too sure what type of forum this is. But I'm here. I'm here as the General Manager of the Guam Visitors Bureau. Again, my name is Carl Pangolinan, Carl with a K. And I'm not here to get into any safety or service aspects of United Airlines nor their operation. I'm actually here in support of our largest industry partner, United Airlines. They are responsible for millions of passenger movements through the years. And just from an economic perspective and the amount of jobs that they have for our island, we like to boast in our industry that the tourism industry is responsible for one out of three jobs, or roughly about 20,000 jobs here on island. And with United employing about 1,000 employees, one in 20 jobs in the tourism industry is, and I think they're all here tonight, is directly related to United Airlines. And so, that's 1,000 families that are being fed and are being cared for through their services that they offer through their employer, United. From a marketing support side, I know I was paying attention to the session this afternoon, and thank you for all of your comments and your debate on the floor. From a marketing support side, what GBB does in our source markets really, really compels in comparison to the amount of marketing support that United offers in these same countries. They market not just Guam as a destination, but they market the region as a destination. And you know why? We wouldn't be anything without their efforts and all that they provide for us. From an events perspective, they are very, very supportive. GBB has a number of signature events that we really look toward, all of our industry partners across the board. And United is a very, very reliable partner in that sense. Their community support from everything, from the Guam International Marathon to the Cocoa Road Race, and very recently, we had seven liberators that came for the 70th anniversary of the liberation. And United, we have to thank, thank you very much for United for flying these liberators out. Some of them haven't been here in a number of years, and it's little things like that that, you know, United doesn't get too much credit for. From an industry's perspective and their reinvestment back into Guam, I believe it's unprecedented. In October, it's no secret, they've announced direct service to Incheon Airport to continually feed our amazing Korean travel market. And that'll be daily service out of Korea. Additionally, we've been very, very bullish on China, with or without a visa waiver. The Bureau is very aggressively supporting and promoting the China visitor to Guam, and United has stepped up. And in that same month, in October, they plan to have two times weekly service direct into Guam out of Shanghai. And so, we applaud their efforts for support in that area. And I just want to round out by saying, you know, the Bureau, we've had an incredible year with all of our signature events and activities that have been completed. And through the commitment of United and our industry partners, we recorded back-to-back banner years and documented well over 1.3 million visitors in each of these years. We also recently launched our Tourism 2020 Plan, which is the roadmap that will transform our island into the destination of choice by the year 2020. We have a goal of reaching 2 million visitors by then, and United is going to be a very, very important partner in us being able to achieve and obtain that number. And for all these reasons and more, GBB supports United and all of our airline partners. Without their collective commitment to Guam, we would not continue to make the history that we're making with our record arrivals and our diversification of markets. The United employees represent a very talented and highly regulated workforce, and we're confident in United's commitment to safety and reliability. So much so that next month, I'm scheduled to be on a plane in September, heading to Jada, and going to position Guam again as a top tourist, visitor destination. And I look forward to getting on Flight 197 next month and seeing some of these fine employees. So, doosmaas.
Thank you, Carl. Next, we have Vicky Fish.
Hafedeh, thank you, Mr. Chair and Senators. I came intending to leave written testimony. Thank you. Which I will do. But I'm happy to speak up from a slightly different side, echoing a little bit of what you said, Carl. As Director of the Guam Girl Scouts, we are an organization on Guam that benefits tremendously from the corporate caring of United Airlines and their employees. There are many organizations on Guam that benefit from this airline, into a degree that when I'm visiting on the mainland or in a national meeting for Girl Scouts, I'm always asked, "How did you get here? How did you manage to get girls to this opportunity?" And I can smile and say, "We have a great friend in United Airlines." So, I know the theme this evening is safety, and I appreciate the opportunity you folks have created for our community to speak. That's part of being a good citizen, and that's what our program is about, teaching girls to become. So, I will admit, I am here as a cheerleader. United Airlines, and I think it ties into the safety because you folks who work for the carrier live in our community, and it is important to you personally to maintain safety. Anything you can do to do a better job in that regard, I have faith you will do. I work with your children. Some of your colleagues have served as our Girl Scout leaders. We've had pilots, troop leaders. We've had flight attendants as troop leaders and involved parents with Girl Scouts. I've been impressed at the involvement of the employees, not just behind a blind corporate label, but coming forward to help. And our program serves as an example, but again, there are many in our community who could probably cite similar support that they've received, whether it's assisting with our fundraisers. We're funded 100% locally, so we depend on our community for help. And United is one of our strongest supporters in time, in resources, and money. In teaching girls how to share the Hafedeh spirit, we partner proudly with United every year, and we have since the Cocoa Race began, in hosting a water station. And we win, usually, the most spirited because of the teamwork. And it's wonderful for girls to get to see and thank people who support them. It's wonderful for the employees to see the girls who benefit. These are the leaders of tomorrow who are becoming leaders today with the investment of time and talents of the people who work for this carrier. So, I would hope that as the proceedings go ahead this evening with a very serious topic at hand, that it's done with an attitude of appreciation for a community citizen that does invest not only in its employees and in its traveling customers, but its future customers, in its future leaders, and certainly in its future citizens. So, I thank you, United, and I thank you folks for looking at how, if there are ways that a business can become better, I hope I'll hear them for the Girl Scouts, and I hope that we can help our community citizen and friend to do the same. And I am speaking independently, but with concurrence of board members who serve Guam Girl Scouts. And I am proud to speak for many girls I know who would sit with me if we could fit 900-plus in the room. Thank you for this opportunity this evening.
Thank you, Vicky. As you can see, we wouldn't be able to fit 900 in here. We do have, next, Mr. Anthony Korn.
Chairman Nicholas, Honorable Senators, ladies and gentlemen, United team. I come today because I'm a very happy, satisfied, frequent traveler for many years, since my youth, with United and Continental. I've also worked for a small regional carrier in the past, and I understand the complexities regarding running an airline. On this note, I have to give credit to United on how they effectively and efficiently handle the airline, and their business too. Considering the multitude of flights operated by United from Guam, the incidence of flight issues are really very minimal. If you look at it, at a ratio percentage compared to the flights that have not had any issues. So, I think we tend to focus on those rare incidences and forget that, in general, the airline has done a very good job of operating their flights. I'm also pleased that United adheres to the highest standards, you know, as required by U.S. safety regulations. Regarding customer service and in-flight services, many people like to compare services of U.S. carriers with foreign airlines, particularly Asian carriers. We have to understand that with a lot of the Asian carriers, a lot of them are subsidized by their governments, right? And they may not necessarily have to adhere to the same high level of standards that U.S. carriers adhere to. So, on this note, I'm really very happy that I am traveling on an airline that emphasizes safety. It's also difficult, you know, I also wanted to mention that it's difficult when incidences come up where we may have to have a little slight delay with flights, but I would rather wait two or three hours and make sure that the flight I'm getting on is safe, you know? And that, I'm sure, United does take care of their issues the best they can. As Lee Weber mentioned earlier, there could be some slight improvements, but what carrier doesn't have their problems, right? And that applies to all businesses. And also, regarding the merger of Continental United, we have a lot of fond memories of Continental. But moving forward, I think United is doing a good job of blending the two airlines. I've worked for a company recently that was very small in comparison when it came to a merger, but I understand how difficult it is to merge two companies. And so, I really applaud United and Continental for how well they've done the merger so far. And then, I'd also just like to reiterate what some of the other members have said, that United has done a great job of giving back their community. In many of the jobs I've worked for in the past, they've always been very supportive of community programs. And also, a lot of my friends who work for United, their livelihoods depend on United. And United is probably one of the largest, if not the largest employer in Guam, after government of Guam. And so, I think United Airlines is doing a great job, and I look forward to continue flying United, you know, for the future. Thank you very much.
And lastly, for our public comment period, we have Mr. David John.
Good evening, Senators. Going last, everyone stole what I was going to say, especially Vicky. I think she actually plagiarized. I'd like to get that letter checked. But all serious, I'm here in support of the airline. Obviously, there's been a couple operational issues that have come up over the last few months, and I think civil discourse is good, and there's an opportunity here to have a discussion. Without reiterating what everyone said, I would just like to ask, sometimes, things in this room get a little out of hand when certain emotional things come up. And I hope tonight that we can have a discussion with the people from Continental in a professional manner and deal with what's really there. I mean, if we're talking, we're here to talk about safety issues. I mean, we haven't had any major issues that have come up. I've flown Continental now for 25 years. I was sitting here as I was going through this, trying to figure out how many times my flight's been late, you know, a few times in 25 years. We have a great partner. Sometimes I wonder if we don't realize what we have. I mean, a city of 160,000 people is what we live on. And we have a hub of a major airline that allows us to get around to pretty much every major city with maybe one stop to get there within the region. I mean, I don't know how many people in the States would kill for that. And those would just be normal communities, not communities that are tied to tourism, which are reliant on bringing bodies into the island. The partner that we have is just immense. I mean, the capabilities that they've done for our industry. So, I just heed, you know, hope that we can keep that in our heads as we have this discussion tonight, so that we can make sure this comes out of there a positive thing. But I won't rehash what everyone else said, especially Vicky stealing my notes. That wasn't very nice. Girl Scouts don't do that, Vicky. Okay, thank you.
Well, that concludes our public comment period. And David, I think almost everything here has been positive so far, you know? So, Mr. Hara, Mr. Munoz, Mr. Weber, Mr. Pangolinan, Ms. Fish, Dr. Shea, Mr. Korn, Mr. John, thank you all very much for joining us this evening. I'll go ahead and allow you guys to depart now. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Senators.
Thank you. Just a couple of housekeeping items before we call up our next panel. I would like to ask the members of the audience present to please respect the fact that the participating parties who will be coming before us are coming here voluntarily, and they are coming here as a private company. And so, the reason why we had the public comment period in the beginning is that anybody who had any kind of issues that they wanted to bring up could go ahead and bring them up. But at this time, when we bring up the United representatives, it's going to be dialogue between the senators and United with respect to the question of safety that was the main topic of discussion here tonight. So, just to make that very, very clear, we won't be entertaining any kind of interruptions or disturbances with respect to the conversation we're going to be having this evening. I would at this time like to go ahead and call up our United representatives to please join us. Sam, if you could, please. And if you could do the honors of introducing the members who attended.
Senator, I'll be introducing everyone during my opening remarks, if that's okay.
Sure. And if you can just, the buzz-in on the microphone is just to make sure that the recording devices are on and the microphones are capturing your testimony. Before you begin, Sam, I did want to read one letter into the record that was provided to the committee.
Thank you, Senator.
And I feel it's important because this was asked, please, 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 mention this, and so I'm going to go ahead and read it. "Senator Sir Nicholas, I want to make known that I feel two members of UA 201's flight crew team were outstanding in their efforts to assist in securing all personal carry-on property to passengers as possible by searching for things in the plane without lights but their cellphone LED." This is, by the way, from Ms. Mary Guevara Cruz, who was affected in the midway landing. One pilot, Derek, she thinks the name is, she goes on to physically describe him, "would announce and keep us informed on the plans and arrangements coming forth throughout the night, from while we settled in the gym to the organizing of the boarding process of the next plane back to Honolulu." The under-individual, whom she describes physically, used her cellphone to find the groomsmen's garment and wedding suit. Poor James, he looked so lost without it. When I noticed the garment bag was found, I shouted toward James, "James, your garment bag." He turns and runs for it as one of the men from midway ran up to get it from the stewardess for him. This is James, who missed his wedding day that was to be on Saturday night, 6:00 p.m. He got married on Sunday. And then, of course, recognition for the rest of the crew members and the rest of the Midway Wildlife Reserve crew. Special mention to JR and Toy, the drivers who drove their mother, their aunt, their youngest sibling, who was physically challenged, and their oldest sister and their other sister to and from the planes. She goes on to state that the Boeing 77 machines may be unpredictable, but the flight crew and the team members were angels in disguise. It was an awesome sight watching and noticing how far these folks were going to help those of us who are feeling so lost searching for things. So, it's a letter of thanks. She asks us to please make sure that we read this into the record because as the experience was what it was for them, the employees and the staff were just incredible, according to Mrs. Guevara. So, I wanted to make sure that was clear as we go ahead and begin these proceedings.
Sure. Thank you very much, Senator.
Thank you, Sam.
Do you have any other testimony? Sorry about that.
So, I want to say, I have a substantial, lengthy, prepared remarks. I'll just say, I'm really humbled by the testimony that was given here today. And I'll say, I'm really proud of the support that we have in the back of the room. I will tell you, there was no arm twisting with respect to getting our employee base out. And I'll just say that our employees are constituents of this body, and they are members of the public, and it's in their vested interest to pay attention to the issues that are going on. And certainly, this is first and foremost on everybody's mind, right? We have been headlines of the news media for many weeks now, and we're actually happy that we have the opportunity to tell our story. And with that, I'll actually start with my prepared opening remarks, if that's okay. And with that, I'll actually start with my prepared opening remarks, if that's okay. Hafane Chairman Siniklas and members of the Guam Legislative Committee on Aviation, Ground Transportation, Regulatory Concerns, and Future Generations. My name is Sam Shinahara, and I'm the Managing Director of Sales and Business Development based here on Guam. On behalf of my 1,000-plus Guam-based coworkers, many of whom are here with me tonight, we thank you for this opportunity to meet with you and other members of the committee. Joining me this evening are the leaders of United's Guam-based operation, Mr. Robbie Christostimo, our Senior Manager of Human Resources, Captain Pierre Fournay, our Chief Pilot, Ms. Meg Paragnalan, General Manager of Airport Operations, Mr. Nielsen Pan, our Director of Asia-Pacific Maintenance, Ms. Clarissa Perez, our Senior Manager of In-flight Operations, and Lisa Duñez, our Managing Director of Accounting and Finance. She's here with us today as well. And from our worldwide headquarters in Chicago, I'm proud to introduce Mr. John Ains, our Managing Director of Regional Express Operations, Captain Mike Coelho, our Vice President, Corporate Safety, and Mr. Dan Weiss, Managing Director, International Affairs and Regulatory. Additionally, we are joined by our colleagues from Cape Air, Mr. David Baker, Regional Director of Micronesia, Craig Bentley, Senior Vice President, Operations, and Paul Connolly, Director of Maintenance, Micronesia. In our invitation, we were asked to discuss the Cape Air service issues, and Mr. Bentley will be making some remarks to address these issues. We understand that you are interested in engaging in a discussion on service issues between Guam and Saipan, our maintenance program, reliability, and safety. As Guam's hometown airline, please know that my coworkers and I personally have an appreciation for the long and proud history that we have in serving Guam and Micronesia, and how important safe and reliable air transportation is to all of us and to the communities and customers that we serve. United, which was previously Continental and Continental Micronesia and Air Micronesia, as we heard earlier, has been operating in this region for over 45 years. We're very proud of our service in Guam and very proud of the commitment to customer service that our employees display every day. We recognize that our Guam-based network provides a critical service airlink to many Pacific Island communities, and that irregular operations can and have a negative impact, particularly when alternate travel options may not exist the same day or even the next day, as is the case in this region, unfortunately. So even one irregular event can impact more negatively these communities in this region than a canceled or delayed flight at any mainland U.S. point, and this fact does not go unnoticed by us. Irregular operations are hard on our customers, they are hard on our communities, and they are hard on our employees that are tasked to rebook and look for alternative means to provide good customer service in the face of adversity. Irregular operations also drive unwanted costs for United. United is incentivized across the board to provide reliable and good customer service. If not, our customer base migrates to the competitor, and that certainly drives negative financial implications to United. Simply put, it's in nobody's best interest for us to have irregular operations. United recently acknowledged in communications to the leadership in this region that certain aspects of our merger have not flown as smoothly as we would have liked. For that, we gravely apologize, and we continue to take corrective action. United has undertaken a number of new policies and procedures aimed at facilitating better customer handling. We are cycling certain aircraft fleets through additional preventive maintenance work. We are enhancing customer service training for all our customer-facing employees, and we've made personnel changes in certain operational areas. These are all in an effort to improve reliability and the overall customer experience. We've seen improvement in many critical areas of the operation due in large part to these activities. Towards the end of 2013, United achieved its highest on-time performance rate at 85% since mid-2012, and United has received many accolades, including frequent flyer program, including best frequent flyer program for the past 10 years. But we all recognize that there is still much more work that we need to do. Specific to Guam, in the past 12 months ending June 2014, United has carried almost 1.5 million people through the Guam Hub on over 10,000 flights. Today, we operate to 22 points in the region and have announced new daily service to Seoul, South Korea, and as we heard earlier, twice-weekly service to Shanghai, China. Mainland China has certainly been an important market on the radar of everyone in Guam's tourism industry and business development, and this has been a market that our team has worked very hard to develop since the year 2008. As a result of the foundation we laid six years ago with our first charter flight between Beijing and Guam, non-stop service to China is coming to Guam in just a few months. We will be the only scheduled carrier between Guam and China. United is a strong community supporter, as we heard earlier, and we have a lot in common with the people of Guam, and it's not just our employee base. United is, we are the only airline providing medical transportation for those in need, including stretcher and oxygen service. And we have a dedicated Guam-based medical reservations desk to serve the regional communities. It's a desk that's dedicated to doing nothing more than serving our medical transportation needs for anyone in this region. In addition, United supports numerous Guam events and organizations like American Cancer Society, the Girl Scouts, Guam Cancer Care, the Make-A-Wish Foundation, the Guam International Marathon, the Guam Football Association, and the Guam-Based USO, and that's just to name a few. United was also instrumental in providing relief services to the medical teams that traveled to the Philippines after the devastating typhoon that hit them. United's Guam-based fleet consists of 12 Boeing 737 aircraft and nine rotating Boeing 777s that are maintained by our locally-based FAA licensed and certified technicians with an average of 20 years of service. The Boeing 737s will soon be undergoing an interior renovation in which they will receive new slimline leather seats, new lavatories, and Economy Plus seating, among other updates. We are aware, unfortunately, that some in the community have expressed disappointment with the comfort and amenities of our 777s. However, I will say that the 777 aircraft provides 92 more seats per flight. It's an increase of 36% over the smaller 767s that serve the same market and give customers greater choices. The planes allow for more people to come to Guam, to carry more cargo to and from Guam, and certainly provide our customer base with a substantial amount of more choices in how they fly. We believe this is a very important addition to the economy here on Guam. We believe that upgaging the aircraft has allowed for substantial economic rewards for the entire community. Airport fees alone have increased by nearly $1 million on an annual basis when compared to collections during the time we flew the 767 aircraft. Furthermore, since first being introduced a number of years ago, the 777s have been refurbished to include more front cabin seats, which have a greater recline and now have footrests on them. These planes have also been outfitted with a personal-device entertainment system that allows the customer to choose up to 200 channels of entertainment options. At United, we know that every canceled, delayed, or denied boarding experience a customer has to endure is a negative one, and we work very hard to prevent such disruptions. Because no matter how big or small the statistic may be, that single missed family event, the missed business meeting, or that medical appointment, it's frustrating, and all of our Guam-based pilots, flight attendants, mechanics, and customer service agents understand this frustration. United is very aware that our operation at times has caused some frustrations, and for that, we gravely apologize. But if you review the statistics, our failure to deliver an on-time operation is not happening all the time. In fact, it is not happening even the majority of the time. According to U.S. Department of Transportation Statistics, United's Guam operations, and this is just Guam, United's Guam operations performed better than any, better than the U.S. airline industry average for the first seven months of 2014. Those facts are illustrated on these two charts that we're putting up for you guys. Senators, if you guys can see it, I'm more than happy to represent it. So the first chart on your left there, Chart 1, shows, it shows completion rates, and as you can see by the blue line representing Guam's operations, United's performance is better than the U.S. industry average, which is represented by the gray line on the same chart. Chart 2, which I believe is the chart on the top up there, shows the trend for flights arriving within 14 minutes of scheduled arrival, which is a standardized DOT metric. And again, United's Guam performance, the blue line, is performing better than the industry average, which is the gray line. It is our goal to achieve 100%. Having said all this, we will not deny certain failures in our operation. It is true that earlier this year, United experienced maintenance scheduling challenges with our Guam-based 737 fleet. However, we took quick action by moving three 737s from the U.S. mainland fleet to Guam, and we can say that operational reliability of this fleet type has been restored. As you all know, the 777s have had some high-profile irregular operations very recently. But out of the six, but out of the 16 777 flights canceled this year, six have occurred since June 1st. No doubt, we all know about the midway diversion, but sometimes irregular operations happen, and in the case of midway, our crew did everything right by diverting to midway without ever impacting the safety of the customers and crew. It's important to note that out of 667 scheduled 777 flights, only 16 have been canceled this year. That represents a 98% completion rate. We share your disappointment in the operational challenge that we have faced in the past several weeks, and we recognize the negative impact this has had on our community, our customers, as well as our coworkers who must endure, endure the stress and challenges of irregular operations. But I want to assure you and the committee, and most importantly, our customers, that the safety of our fleet has never been compromised. Decisions are made with safety in mind first and foremost, and safety is not something that United is willing to compromise on. And to speak more about United's safety programs, we've invited our Vice President of Safety, Captain Mike Coelho, to provide an update to you guys. Before I yield my time to Captain Coelho though, on behalf of my 1,000-plus coworkers and many of which are here tonight, I just want to reiterate that United is committed to the island and the surrounding Pacific region because we have called this place home for over 46 years. Cidus Masian, thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Sam. And before I turn it over to Captain Coelho, I first wanted to say, on behalf of the 32nd Guam Legislature, welcome to Guam and welcome to our home, and thank you very much for your responsiveness and your willingness to participate. The reason why we called this roundtable hearing is because we wanted to make sure that those perceptions that are floating around out there throughout this community, as small as we are at 160,000, perceptions spread quickly. And we understand that United is a very critical partner, not only in the economy of Guam, but in our critical industry of tourism, as well as in all of the many philanthropic activities that you guys participated. And so we wanted to make sure that United is given the opportunity to address the perceptions that are circulating and to also publicly make whatever statements are necessary to allay any fears that the community may be having as a result of certain misunderstandings or misperceptions. At the same time, too, the situation was exacerbated by a letter that was sent from some members of the 32nd Guam, but I want to assure United that that letter did not originate from the committee or the committee chair. And at this point, we wanted to make sure that the right people came to the table to address the community and the legislature, and I, as the Chair, wanted to express my deep gratitude for you guys making the time to join us this evening because it is entirely on a voluntary basis. So thank you very much, and Captain Coelho, the microphone is yours, sir.
Thank you, Senators. Ladies and gentlemen, fellow coworkers, thank you for the opportunity to speak to you regarding safety at United Airlines. You know, there are times that we may not live up to service expectations. Sometimes the causes are controlled by United, other times they may be caused by circumstances outside our control. But under no circumstances, and let me reiterate, under no circumstances will United compromise safety. We have no higher obligation to our coworkers, our passengers, and our airline. I trust our pilots, our aircraft maintenance technicians, and our ground crew implicitly. They can call timeout at any time, and I will support them 100%. United carries approximately 150 million passengers a year on our system. That's half the population of the United States. Our last fatal hull accident in Colorado Springs happened in early, in the early 1990s, almost a quarter of a century ago. Since that time, we have carried close to 2 billion passengers without a fatality. That's one-third the population of the world. That's an awesome responsibility when you step back and think about it. It's an awesome responsibility. Now, I'll compare that to the railroad industry in the United States, where 1,000 people got killed last year, or on our highways, where 33,000 people died last year. We are in extremely safe mode of transportation, an extremely safe mode of transportation. I would tell you that if my pilots sign an aircraft ready for flight, or one of my aircraft maintenance technicians signs an airplane ready for flight, I will not only put myself on that airplane, I will put my family and my children on that airplane. And you can be rest assured that you can do the same and do so very with as much ease as you can think of. We could have never achieved that record of safety unless safety was our number-one attribute, and that starts with Jeff Smysik, our CEO, and it's practiced and embraced by every one of our 85,000 coworkers. United is an industry leader in safety, and United actively participates in all of the Federal Aviation Administration voluntary programs. So we have mandatory programs and there are voluntary programs, which includes ASIUS, the Aviation Safety Information and Analysis System, FOKA, Flight Ops Quality Assurance, all our ASAP programs, Aviation Safety Action programs. It's embedded in each one of our operational divisions. That's a non-punitive, just culture program to identify risk and trends before they lead to an incident. United is fully certified in the FAA Safety Management Systems. There's over 90 airlines that have started the Safety Management System. United was one of the first to complete Level 4, the highest level of certification by the FAA. As United's safety leader, I sit on the Flight Safety Foundation's Governance Council. I sit on the Board in Washington, D.C. I'm a member of the A4A Safety Council. I am the co-chair with the FAA of the ASIUS Executive Board. I also sit on the Star Alliance Safety Strategy Team. So once again, thank you for this opportunity to be here, thank you for inviting me to Guam, and I look forward to addressing any questions and answering any questions that you may have. Thank you.
United employees should applaud. Thank you, Captain Coelho, for joining us again and for your testimony. The committee would go ahead and like to take an opportunity to yield to Senator Brad McCready, who authored the letter to the CEO of United, in case he had any kind of specific questions he wanted to address, seeing that there was a communication channel in that regard.
Sure, if I could just interject just real quick, Senator, apologies for interrupting. I just wanted to say, certainly, your letter has been well-received, and we're hoping that this particular forum addresses your questions and concerns.
Thank you very much, and I just want to say, looking at the loyalty of the employees here, and getting off a plane in United three weeks ago and getting back on one in December, my confidence in you guys and our commitment to you guys is greater than ever before. So I thank you for allowing us to speak and for mentioning our letter that three of us did sign, and I'm sure they're gonna want to talk soon, but four of us. But I just want to thank you guys for being here, our great employees, and we want a longstanding relationship with you guys, and we'll continue to support you guys. And I hope this is good for us, we can keep dialoguing throughout the years that we grow together, and I think we just need to move forward. So I thank you for being here, but thank you, employees, and, you know, we'll just keep moving forward. But I'm very, very happy that you guys answered all my questions and my concerns. I'm sure some of the senators will also discuss their pleasures with what has been just discussed earlier in this conversation. So thank you very much. My questions have been answered, and I'm happy to jump on a plane with the family of eight, my kids and my...
of eight, my kids and my in-laws. I take my in-laws with me everywhere we go. So when I get on a plane, it's eight people. And we flew a lot this year and last year. So we'll continue to get on United Airlines, and I thank you guys all for being here. And give yourselves a round of applause. So thank you.
Thank you, Senator. We appreciate that. Thank you very much.
Do any of my other colleagues have any questions they'd like to pose? Senator Duñez.
Thank you, Sam, and thank you, Captain. You know, eloquent remarks by the Chairman. I am a signatory to this, or my signature is on this letter. Many of you are very familiar to me. Many of you know I've been flying for many years with Continental and United. I have a captain's license. I understand exactly what you're saying, Captain. I also have a submersibles endorsement. I totally understand what redundant systems mean. I totally understand what it means to sign off on a vessel before it leaves port, or a submarine before it goes thousands of feet below the water. I don't want to steal my minority leader's thunder, but he joins my brother in being an airframe and power plant mechanic. And so the reason why I chose to join and sign on the letter and to have you folks come forward today to be able to present your position and to answer to the Chairman's invite tonight is because, of course, I have no problem, once that cabin door closes, getting on that aircraft anytime, because I know what the captain goes through and I know what the crew goes to before that aircraft leaves the ground. But many of our people don't. And as you've admitted, Sam, there have been a number of growing pains with regard to the merger. And so I think it gave light to and sort of kind of started to grow in terms of the public sentiment. Many of us get phone calls. We meet people in the stores. This issue with the growing pains and the recent maintenance issues is no different than the budget that we're discussing right now, than any other community issue that comes our way, because this is what we do. We respond to public outcry about issues. And so we're glad that you guys are here tonight, and we're glad that for many of us who totally understand what goes in to the procedures before an airplane leaves the ground, for those who don't, you've made a very compelling and strong statement tonight in terms of your commitment, not only to safety, but to correcting some issues that many of the community have addressed to us, and I'm sure to yourselves, in terms of their concerns. So I want to thank you personally. I want to join the author of the letter in saying that I have, so far what I've been able to hear, there is no question whatsoever in terms of your safety record, your commitment, and your commitment to improved service, and also your commitment to being an excellent community partner. So that's my statement for now, for the record, unless I have a question in the future. So thank you very much, Mr. Chairman, and thank you to the United family.
Thank you, Senator.
Thank you, Senator Duñez. Any of my other colleagues have any statements?
Mr. Chair.
Okay. Everyone's jumping to perstatement. I'll go ahead and yield to Senator Uggins.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. You know what's kind of interesting is, I experienced a couple of those flight delays. One was departing here to a place in Asia, and apparently on the 27th, and there was a flight delay of about two hours. And then returning because of the storm, obviously, there was cancellation of a few flights, and it gave my wife and I an extra two days to spend quality time. So for that...
You're welcome, Senator.
For extending that, I want to say thank you, yes. You know, but in this particular situation, looking at some of the incidents that I personally experienced just in the last three weeks, you know, I'd rather be safe with that added assurance rather than to have a major incident occur. And that's what this all boils down to. And I just received a text, and someone just shared with me, appreciation to the Chairman and to all of the representatives here for being at the table and reassuring the community that there are national safety standards that have to be complied with. And in addition to that, Captain Coelho, you highlighted that there are additional standards that you try to continue to participate and meet to assure your passengers and your customer base that, in fact, you're doing the best job that you possibly can nationwide as an airline to be able to ensure safety. So on that note, I just want to say thank you again for not only your presence tonight, but most especially for being a tremendous community partner. We heard a lot of comments, good comments, about the contribution that United has made, initially Continental, but United continues to make to our local community. And I think that that biggest factor is employing many of our people and giving them that livelihood that they rightfully deserve. So thank you very much. And let me close with this comment. I think you have an excellent representative in Mr. Shuna Harrow here. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Senator. I will just say, you know, with respect to the, you know, quite frankly, the overwhelming community support we got here, you know, we're not just corporate citizens here. You know, I mean, this is our family. Guam is home to me. I'm born and bred here. And, you know, we have folks who have migrated over here. Captain Fernay, he's not originally from here, but he doesn't want to be anywhere else. And I'll say that, you know, I mean, the Guamanian spirit is alive and well within the United organization. I know there's been a lot of sentiment with respect to Continental Micronesia, and please bring back Continental Micronesia and the Continental spirit. I will say that it's never died with United. You know, we've changed the name, we haven't changed anything else. Thank you.
And just let me add one addition, though, comment. It's that our safety record, that 25 years of safe flying, that 2 billion passengers without a fatality, that we work at that every day. Every single day, we have to work at that. And it's not only me, but it's my 85,000 coworkers, our pilots, who make the tough calls at times. You know, there's a lot of pressure at times to get a flight out, and the pilots make the hard decisions because they understand the inconvenience to all of that. But they make the right decision all the time. And that safety record that we have does not come easy. And so I just wanted to add that to the record also.
Thank you, Captain Coelho. Senator Tornada.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Mr. Shuna Harrow, and Mr. Lee, and thank you guys for coming to my office to pay me that courtesy call. And to the United management staff and mechanics and flight attendants, everyone, thank you for being here tonight. You know, the opening of the, the Chairman opened his remarks saying that the letter did not generate from the committee. Whenever safety is of concern to anyone, it shouldn't need to come from a committee. It can come from anyone. And even if just one individual comes with a concern, it should be a concern for everyone. So that's what we prompted us to generate the letter, which got to this roundtable. If we didn't generate the letter, this roundtable probably would have never happened. And I'm glad that you, as corporate, private corporation, has come out and voluntarily said, you know what, let's go to that roundtable and let's talk with them. And it says a lot about your integrity. It says a lot about the United folks as a company. And it says a lot about what you guys want the people to know. And this letter accomplished that. This letter accomplished that in saying that, you know what, we're all about safety. I know what it's like to be on the flight line. I know what it's like to be out there on a turnaround for the aircraft. I was an aircraft mechanic for Northwest, and I was also an aircraft mechanic in the Army for many years. So I know what it's like to be out there. I know what the pressure is. I know what the, you know, the do's and don'ts, and what it takes to get an aircraft back on, ready for flight. So, and I appreciate all that. But once again, we're here because of safety concerns, and those concerns were addressed. They were asked and answered. So if the Chairman felt that generating the letter wasn't the right thing to do, I'd beg to differ. And I will always beg to differ when it comes to safety. And it's just like you folks, coming forward here today. You beg to differ with us because you want to show that your safety, your reputation is on the line when it comes to safety. And I thank you for that. And I always, you know, I just, I just got off a flight to, my entire family, we're on United, that went to California. You know, I spent thousands of dollars, and I'd do it all over again, because that's what it's about, you know? Enjoying family vacations and traveling on United, back and forth. I haven't flown any other airline. And United's always been my airline. When it was Continental, it was Continental my airline. So it's not a matter of, you know, is this an election year that Mr. Weber brought up earlier, that that's why this roundtable is here? It's not. It's not because it's an election year. It's because safety is concerning to everyone. And regardless whether it's an election year or a non-election year, whenever someone brings up the issue of safety, we've got to address it. And just like you folks, someone brings up something, you would like to address it. And bringing it out to the public and letting them know exactly what's going on, how things are going, what you guys are doing to fix the issues, what you guys are doing to remedy the situation, that's all we're asking. And you guys have answered it, and I thank you for that. And once again, thank the Committee Chair, regardless whether he disagreed with my letter or not, I thank him for calling this roundtable because it brought everybody together. And now nobody can turn around and say, you know what, United didn't answer those questions. United didn't do this. United didn't do that. No one can say that now, because United came to the table. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Senator.
Senator Rodriguez.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chair. Thank you very much, Sam, and to the United workers who are here this evening. First of all, I also want to join the previous speaker in acknowledging that I was one of the signatories in this letter that Senator Brett McCready had invited me to sign. I think it was our responsibility as representatives of the people that when concerns are brought to us, we, this is one of the things that we do, we elevate it. And what we did was write a letter to the CEO of Continental, of United. And I think that was the proper route to take, if not to drag a private business in here this evening to have to go through this. Because, you know, I mean, if this is something we're going to do, if we have a problem with Kmart or Home Depot, I would, you know, that's something that I think is very concerning to me. So I think a lot of the concerns that were raised about safety has been addressed. I want to thank also Sam for spending some time with me earlier this week in explaining, you know, what type of regulations the airlines, United and other airlines, have to go through. There's so much regulations that you guys have to follow in terms of safety, and so there's nothing that this body can do to ever, you know, to underscore what type of guidelines and regulations you guys have to go through. So we know that safety is always a top priority in United's mission. And we know that the cancellation of flights and the diversion of flights is an inconvenience, but it's a blessing, because, you know, that meant that the pilots that made those decisions to divert to Midway Island or to not take off from here made the right decision because it was safety over having to go and take that flight out. So I really appreciate that. I want to just also highlight the types of services that United provides to the community, such as the stretcher, the stretchers to our medical patients, and also oxygen. Our office has worked numerous times with United in trying to facilitate some of these missions. And so I thank you. I know you're the only airlines that provide this to our people, so I'm very thankful for that. The community service that you guys do, most recently, that I was really a part of, is the Plane Pool. We have a team there, although I wasn't happy that I was dunked a lot because I was one of the guys that got on that dunking booth, but I'll do it again next year. And so I wanted to thank you again for the opportunity to be here and for ensuring that safety, again, is of utmost priority. And really, the opportunity I had to share with Sam about the difficulty you guys are having with the type of aircrafts that are, you know, being used here is something that I know that is being worked on long-term. I know that after this merger talks are complete, that things will start to see some improvements in the routes and the type of aircrafts and the fleets that you have here. So I think, you know, the bottom line is that the people of Guam are, you know, can make certain that with you being here tonight and assuring us that safety is the number-one priority. Okay? So thank you very much.
Thank you, Senator.
Senator Adams. Thank you. I'll just be very brief. First of all, I, regardless of what brought us to this table tonight, the fact is, we're here and we're having this good dialogue. I had a chance to listen to you on K-57 this morning. I think you guys did an excellent job of laying out basically the things that you do to ensure the safety of the airplanes. And probably most importantly is the things that United is doing to really kind of upgrade these airplanes that are servicing us here. So there's something, you know, to look forward to. And you did clarify the fact that maybe the expectations of the customers out here, just there's a gap between those expectations and just how quickly you can deliver, because I realize you also have to stand in line with the other, the other locations. There's been mention made that you're the only game in town. I don't think you are. I mean, if I thought that you were really, your service was really bad, and I had my misgivings about your safety record, I'll take the extra four hours to fly through Japan to get to where I'm going. So I don't think you're the only game in town. But despite that, I continue to fly United Airlines. One, because I've always flown either United or Continental, and two, because my wife says we're going to fly United Airlines. But most important, though, is the fact that I think, you know, Sam, the fact that you took the time to come and visit the senators, you know, you accommodated my schedule. I appreciated that very much, that we can have that dialogue. And to me, that was very important, because it wasn't so much what you said, it was just as much the body language that, you know, this guy wasn't trying to pull the wool over my eyes. So I think my level of confidence in your integrity and the integrity of the company certainly is very high. I did raise some concerns yesterday. I think you allayed those concerns. We don't need, I don't think I need to raise it here. But I'm just glad that we're having this discussion. The issue of the concern about safety was raised, and I think the discussion that has taken place this morning on the radio tonight, I think, is going a long ways to allay a lot of those concerns. And I thank you for that. I thank you for coming all the way out here to contribute to the discussions. Thank you.
Thank you, Senator. I'll say that this is not Mr. Coelho's first trip to Guam. He's a three-time veteran to this place since the merger, and he has spent a substantial amount of time throughout Micronesia, helping the Micronesian airports with their safety programs and safety issues with respect to our operation in the region. And Senator, I also want to thank you guys for your business, because Senator Adams, I think you said it very eloquently, you guys do have a choice. We certainly aren't the only game in town. We recognize that we have a strong competitor in the marketplace, and we appreciate the business, and we appreciate it greatly, and we'll work very hard to keep you guys flying with us. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Sam. I don't think there are any more senators to comment, no? First of all, for Mr. Weber and for everybody present, I apologize that it's an election year. You know, we can't help what year it is. But I do thank you guys for making the time to come out. Again, this entire roundtable discussion was centered around making sure that we addressed the perspectives of the people with regards to the safety of United Airlines. I think we've done a very good job of that. I think that I would also like to take a minute to ask our audiovisual crew if they could please zoom in on the graphs that we have up here on the back right of the, of the roundtable for the benefit of the viewing audience. I'm a visual kind of guy, so when we can visualize the charts and demonstrate...
Quite frankly, Senator, I'm colorblind, so I don't know which is gray and blue. Yeah. So there's gray there, certainly.
The top blue line is the Guam non-Cape Air United flights. And you can see that they are above all the other lines there. The, we're looking at the top chart there, the one on the east, so that's what's showing up on the TV. And we can see that from January to August, everything was above everybody else, and it's just in the last month or so that we've kind of seen everything almost come back to the mean. And that's actually normal. I mean, you're not going to be above board all the time. But what we do see is an incredible performance record of United with respect to the Guam flights as they compare to the United flights and as they compare to the Department of Transportation flights for all U.S. state carriers. So we can see that we are above average most of the time. We've reverted back to average with respect to the recent, in the very short time period that we've had, the recent, and I would say, bad string of sequences. But the blessing is that in spite of the drop, we've had no casualties, we've had no injuries. Everybody's... time period that we've had, the recent, and I would say, bad string of sequences. But the blessing is that, in spite of the drop, we've had no casualties, we've had no injuries. Everybody's alive and well. So, it's a reversion to the mean, and that's a normal occurrence on any kind of statistic. On the second chart there, if we can get the audiovisual crew to focus on the second chart. Thank you. We can see there United Guam completion rate as compared to the overall industry. And again, it tracks very, very closely. The overall industry is the lower line, the United, throughout the United States, is the gold line. And the blue line is the Guam, the Guam rate. And again, we can see that there's a period of upperformance from May to July, and some underperformance from July to August. But again, it all reverts back to the mean. So, on average, United is performing very, very well with respect to the industry. We are, at the very least, averaging out, but we always have a period of above-average and sometimes below-average occurrences. But those are all circumstantial, depending on what's going on with the aircraft. So, for the benefit of the listening audience, looking at those two charts, and thank you to the audiovisual crew, you can go ahead and revert back to the meeting. But for the benefit of the listening audience, it's very clear statistically, and with respect directly to the operations here on Guam, that United's performance is above average most of the time, and average for the most part. But there's definitely nothing extraordinarily wrong with the services that United provides with respect to the rest of the country. What is extraordinary is, we have, as was mentioned earlier by Mr. David John, a population of 160,000, and so many United top brass that have made the time to come out here and address us. It's also pretty extraordinary that, with our population, we are a hub. I don't think there's any population our size in anywhere in the world that's serviced by any other airlines is actually a hub for a aircraft, an airline service provider. So, Guam is in an incredible position, and United has helped to put us in that position. United's performance safety-wise, I hope that this roundtable discussion has allayed any of the concerns or fears that may be out in the community. There are other issues that were brought up. However, those things will be discussed directly with the United personnel. In the end, I believe that we have a very good community partner sitting across the table. I think that your presence here is a testament to that. I think that United is an incredible employer, with all the employees present tonight being a testament to that. And I look forward to a good working relationship going forward. And I thank you very much for responding to my request for us to be able to have this roundtable, and for upping the ante and bringing out some really incredible representatives. So, if any of you folks have anything else that you'd like to add... I did have one question that I wanted to bring.
Sure.
And that was with respect to the Cape Air flights, to our partners in the Northern Mariana Islands. There's been some service disruptions that have interrupted the business, the business of certain companies here on the island, because they do have business concerns in our Northern Mariana partners. So, if we could get an update on where we are with Cape Air.
Absolutely. You know, to address the Cape Air concerns, we brought out Cape Air leadership, as I indicated earlier. With, to my right is Mr. Craig Bentley. He's the Senior Vice President of Operations. And if we could afford him some time, he'll give you guys an update. Thank you very much.
Happy day, Chairman San Nicholas, members of the Guam Legislature, members of the media, residents of Guam, my fellow airline employees. My name is Craig Bentley. I'm the Senior Vice President of Operations for Cape Air. I want to thank you and the panel for the opportunity to be here tonight. I'm here to listen to your concerns, and to assure you of Cape Air's commitment to safe, reliable air service for the residents of Guam, the CNMI, your visitors, and the local business leaders that rely... that rely on the critical air transportation you entrust us to deliver. I am joined tonight by my colleagues and partners from United Airlines, as well as Cape Air's Director of Maintenance, Paul Conley, and our Regional Director, David Baker. I speak on behalf of the 60-plus Cape Air employees here in the region, and for the over 1,100 Cape Air employees worldwide. Mr. Chairman, if you'll permit me, I'd like to take a few minutes to tell you about Cape Air, our mission and our operation here. While our story contains many elements and characters, the one theme that pervades everything that we do is our belief in making safety our highest priority. The flying public puts its trust in us, and it is our responsibility and honor to live up to that trust. I know that flight cancellations and delays have an adverse effect on our customers, and we sincerely apologize for this inconvenience. However, we will not compromise when it comes to ensuring that our airplanes are fit to fly. And we will do whatever is necessary to meet the highest standards of safety. Although we have had some challenges in recent months, we are proud of the overall service record that we have achieved in the past 10 years we have been flying here in Guam. Please know that we will continue to do everything in our power to maintain our schedule and provide the service our passengers deserve. For those of you who don't know, Cape Air began 25 years ago with three aircraft, 11 employees, and one market. Today, we operate 80 aircraft, employ over 1,100 professionals, and serve 48 markets. We serve 700,000 passengers annually, and 100,000 of them right here in Guam. Our airline was founded on the belief that customers and communities we serve deserve safe, reliable, and frequent air service. We connect over 48 small communities throughout our network with a vital connection to the worldwide air transportation network. Our company mantra is Moka Hagari, make our customers happy and have a good time doing it. We believe in empowering our frontline employees to make the best decision for our customers. As a leader at Cape Air, I work to provide those employees with the tools and resources to deliver our product. We share in our successes, and our employees own 20% of our company. We offer annual profit sharing, medical and dental benefits, and a company-match 401(k) plan. All of this would not be possible without our customers and the support of people like you, and we are truly thankful. In 2003, Cape Air accepted an offer by then Continental Airlines to partner with them here in Guam, and we commenced our first flight in 2004. 10 years later, we continue to be committed to this region, and we work constantly to improve our airline, as well as the experience our customers have when they travel with us. From our headquarters in Hyannis, Massachusetts, our senior leadership team makes multiple visits to Guam. I personally visit four to six times each year, and I find Guam and the people of the island to be the most welcoming and gracious hosts. This region is beautiful, and I truly love coming here. In addition to our frequent visits, each week, we hold operational calls with leaders from both our headquarters and our team here. Also, our team here in Guam discusses all technical aspects of the operation and the aircraft with its leaders in Hyannis on a daily basis. By communicating frequently, we can ensure that our frontline employees have the resources to deliver the finest service to our customers. We also have daily meetings with our partner, United Airlines, to discuss service levels and identify and correct any deficiencies. The Cape Air employee team in this region is made up of 38 employees here on Guam, seven employees in Rota. And as a part of our commitment to the region, we have recently added the Saipan Station as a full-fledged Cape Air base. And we now employ over 20 professionals in Saipan. All three stations are supported locally by our Regional Director. Starting on September 1st of this year, we will also be adding an additional manager to our maintenance operation here in Guam. All the employees remain engaged in their communities, and we regularly support many local events. Most recently, we helped in Saipan to adopt a beach and provide a cleanup so that locals and visitors would have a nice place to visit. Our operation here in Guam has two dedicated aircraft. And for the past three years, our completion rate has exceeded 98%. While usually, we're able to operate one of these aircraft as a spare, every three years, we must send the airplanes to a required scheduled maintenance inspection that occurs back in the continental U.S. During this time, we sustain the operation with only one aircraft, and this is where we are right now. To help support the operation, we have based a full-time technician in Saipan, and we also have a technician that rides along on the aircraft. We carry additional spare components on the aircraft to help with any repairs that need to be made when the aircraft is in Saipan or Rota. We adjust our service pattern during the one-aircraft operation to provide the proper time for our maintenance team to inspect and maintain the aircraft. If we must take the airplane out of service, our partner, United Airlines, has pledged to provide a 737 service to ensure we minimize the impact to our customers. With our pledge to customer service being just behind our pledge to safety, we realize this is not an ideal, and that it does not meet the needs of our customers. We acknowledge in recent months, we failed to deliver reliable service. And I'm here tonight to pledge to you that we'll continue to work on understanding our shortcomings, and to commit to improve our service for you and the members of this community. I humbly thank you for your time, as well as the opportunity to be here tonight.
Mr. Bentley, is it? Okay. Thank you so much for sharing your testimony with us. Just wanted to inquire, with respect to the services of Cape Air, where are we in terms of the continuity right now? And if there is a delay or any kind of interruption, how is United filling the gap? And how long can we expect this current circumstance to still be in place before we return back to a state of normalcy?
So, if we look back in March, we took one of the aircraft out of service and sent it over to a facility in the continental U.S. for what is scheduled as a 60-day inspection and return to service. We've been troubled with some supply chain issues in getting the parts and components needed to return that aircraft fully to service and bring it back here to the island of Guam. We continue to work on that every day here. During our time since March, we've had a fairly consistent service level. In June and July, through about July 24th, we actually ran 100% completion rate. On July 24th, we took the aircraft here in Guam out of service. And between July 24th and August 14th, we had about 130 cancellations. Since August 14th, we have been back in service, and we continue to run at 100% since August 14th.
So, you guys are back at 100% since August 14th? That's just of one aircraft, though?
Yes, sir.
Okay. And so, if there are any issues with that one aircraft, there is a possibility that we could get into that same kind of service disruption?
Sure. If we look at the time period from July 24th through August 14th, as pledged by our partner, United, they activated a 737 aircraft. If we actually look on a chart of the amount of seats that were added to the market, or to sustain the market during that time period, there were, I think, seven less seats by United serving it with a 737, as opposed to us offering the more frequent service, up to five round trips a day. So, that remains in effect through the rest of what we call the one-airplane operation.
How much longer are we going to be under a one-airplane operation?
That's a great question. We continue to work with the aircraft manufacturer in Toulouse, France, as well as with many vendors and parts suppliers, to hopefully get that airplane back here very soon. When we have a date on that, we will happily share that with you.
Do you have any kind of anticipation? Are we looking at a year of concern, or six months?
I certainly hope it's not a year. But I wouldn't want to commit to a date, because we've had some real significant challenges with getting parts, and the delivery dates continue to get pushed back. We are down to just a few critical components. The facility that we use to repair the aircraft and complete the inspection actually now has authorization from the aircraft manufacturer to make the parts. They have the engineering drawings, so they're taking the extra effort, and we're spending the extra capital to make that happen.
Okay. And the reason why I ask if we can get some kind of a time range is because of those business interests that are affected whenever we have less than 100% reliability. I do want them to be able to stand at the ready, pretty much, to adjust whatever their schedules normally would have been in the event that there is a service disruption. So, if we could get some kind of an anticipated range, that would be very helpful to our local businesses, so that they can know that, okay, at least for the next six months, maybe, we need to probably, you know, be ready to have these kind of disruptions. Because that way, everybody's, you know, at the know, and they're able to make whatever adjustments they need to make. So, can we get some kind of a potential timeframe?
I can't disclose a potential timeframe. We will continue to operate our schedule as published, in the name of safety. When we have an issue with the aircraft, we will take it out of service. That's what we're entrusted to do. I would love to be able to tell you that the aircraft will be back, and the second aircraft will be back here in a month, but I can't commit to that.
Okay. So, we can for sure state that it is indefinite that we're going to have only one airplane servicing the Northern Mariana's route, and for an indefinite period of time, any of our local business interests would need to be able to make whatever adjustments are necessary?
Yeah, I don't know. The indefinite's a strong word. We continue to work on that, and we'll get it back as soon as we can.
Okay.
Hi.
If you could state your name, please.
Yes, I'm sorry. I'm John Ains, and I oversee United Express operations for United. And, you know, while Craig's comments notwithstanding it, you know, I can see how it might be perceived as trying... Sorry. It might be perceived as being cagey or something, and that's absolutely not the case here. I think Craig would acknowledge that we've got, most of the work is done, and there's these few key components that we're waiting on. And it's just very, you know, cautious to say, "We think it'll be here next week." We're not saying that. But, you know, "We think it'll be here next week," and then it's not, and then you said. And so, that's really what it's about. I think, though, we would be more than happy to tell you when we know what that date is, when we've got the remaining parts and things are going back together. I think we'd be able to give you that date. We just don't have it yet.
That's fair. And no interpretation of anybody being cagey.
Good.
But for the sake of the interests that are affected, we did want to inquire, so that we can try and get some kind of a handle. At least now, knowing that it would be for... I'll try and find a synonym for the word indefinite, but I can't come up with one off the cuff. But for that, for the current time period, at least they can make whatever adjustments they need to locally. But I do thank you for your services to our region. I have flown Cape Air many times. When I was an Assistant Vice President for Bank of Guam, I would fly around to go meet our investment clients in the Northern Marianas, and the service has always been excellent. So, thank you very much. And I am grateful to hear that we are back at 100% service capacity. Again, I really appreciate the presence of everybody here this evening. Does any of my fellow colleagues have any other questions? Any of my colleagues? This has been a very, very good hearing. I think that we've addressed a lot of issues, and I think that we've put to rest a lot of concerns. And I would also like to, again, for the record, to state, for the benefit of the listening audience, that the presence of the individuals that we have here tonight for this roundtable is not only, I think, unprecedented, but an incredible testament to how important the Guam hub and the people of Guam are to the United operation. Thank you very much. And we will go ahead and conclude this roundtable in less than two hours at 7:50 this evening. Thank you, gentlemen, ladies, very much.